Six, everything. Again, it's good to see everybody back. I just want to make a couple of, just small, analysis. Bill Mullin, he resigned or didn't fill out his papers. And he's gone, pretty much retired from the board, I guess. So I just, we'd like Nancy to make a letter. Just thanking her for years, there's sense.
Yes, definitely.
No question. Basically, we all sign it?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Absolutely.
Okay. Everyone agree with that?
Yes.
All right, good. Okay, Nancy, that's it? All right, so, here we go. We have reorganization of the board. We do this every, what, every year?
After every election.
After every election, every year. Okay. All right, so, do we have any nominations or... Go ahead.
I'd like to nominate Andrew as the chairman. Seconds?
Third.
Okay, I'm sorry. Andy nominated Andrew.
Andrew.
I second.
And I third.
And I third.
You said, say, you accept or you don't? What do you?
All right, I'll accept it. Thank you. Appreciate that. All right.
All right, so let's, should I do the next one? And then Andy Green's over?
Yeah.
Okay. So, any nominations for vice chair?
I nominate Andy Brubin for vice chair.
I second. Third. Okay. All right, guys? Music changes.
We need a clerk, too. We need a clerk. It was something that Amy said was supposed to happen, so.
Okay.
So I nominate Richard as a clerk.
Okay. All right? She is, guys.
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Well, you know, it's necessary to move around.
Yeah, it's a good thing, though.
Oh, I said it could come.
All right.
Jesus. All right.
That's the David twice.
No, it could be false.
Nope, not mine.
Oh, really? What?
They told me I had AIDS, but I could get blood. When I get blood, four people can send it for my blood.
Okay. All right, what's our...
All right. It being after seven o'clock, move on to the next item. Approval of minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from February 13th, 2020, in March 12th, 2020 meeting?
I'll make the motion on February 13th. I wouldn't hear March 12th, so.
I second it.
All those in favor?
All right.
Aye. All right, and do we have a motion on the... I'll make a motion to approve the March 12th, 2020 minutes. In the second?
I second it.
All those in favor?
All right.
Aye.
And then we'll say.
All right. It being after seven o'clock on the vice chair, please read the notice for the continued hearing petition of Robert W. and Diane Greeno, 189 Rockland Street.
Zoning Board of Appeals, Public Hearing Notice, The Town of Abington, the Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, March 12th, 2020, at 7:00 PM at the Abington Town Office, 500 Glenwood Way, Abington, on a petition of Robert W. and Diane Greeno, 189 Rockland Street, Abington, for a lot with variance of 4.64 feet under 175-21 on Lot 1, 189 Rockland Street. The property is located on Assessor's Map 22 on 47 in the R20 zone. Richard McGraw, lead chairman.
Will the petitioners please come forward?
Mr. Chairman?
Before we start, I just want you to put your voice up and we'll go through the personal relationship with the owner of the property.
Okay. Thank you.
Did they consider the table?
Oh, okay, yes. Yep, you can sit at the table. Sorry, we're trying to sort of figure this all out as we go along.
You're actually comfortable with nothing else.
It's understandable.
All right, so, you were here previously on your request for a variance?
Yes, sir.
All right, would you mind just giving us some background information about or describing your petition?
I had a GAVI engineering survey on my property. I own a touch over an acre, 210 feet of frontage. And somewhere after, I bought it in 1995. And at that time, when I came here, I was given the plot plan from the owner when I bought the property. And they said to me in the town office, "Oh, you're going to be able to subdivide that and have half-acre lots on your side." And I said, "What do you mean?" She goes, "Oh, it's Zone 20." I said, "Okay," so...
Was that the realtor who told you that?
Andy?
Yeah, I think that was the realtor.
Yeah, Andy Babbs. So, now, fast forward 25 years, we've retired, and now we're trying to subdivide to half-acre lots.
What we did not know is that two times, in 1930 and 1970, our property was taken once to level the road and then to widen the road, which now they took 12 feet on the front of my property that we weren't aware of. So that 12 feet now caused me to need 4 feet.
Four foot six, four. So, and I believe, 2003, the town changed the bylaws to be, I had to have 100 foot of frontage at the 35-foot mark.
And that's where we're 4 foot short.
Theirs were 4 foot 6 short. I have 100, in one lot, I have 110 feet, and the other lot, I have 100 feet.
And after the last meeting, we indicated that we would discuss this matter with town council or at least request an opinion with respect to her position. So there are several issues that were presented to us. One of them is that, at the time you bought the lot, the taking had already taken place, the eminent domain taken.
Right, definitely.
So, I mean, you currently own a conforming lot, and you're attempting to make that into two non-conforming lots.
No, one would be a conforming lot.
Oh, excuse me. Yeah, one non-conforming and one conforming lot.
Right.
Which is extremely hard to do with respect to zoning law in the state of Massachusetts. So, you know, essentially, we're looking for the conditions that would rise to you meeting the requirements of a variance. And, you know, based upon the opinion that we received from town council, it's going to be extremely hard for you to do that. As I said, it's, there's not really any case law that supports taking a conforming lot and dividing it into a non-conforming and a conforming lot, absent, you know, highly unusual circumstances. Have you, you know, have...
I've lived here all my life.
And I appreciate that. And I mean, I understand the predicament that you're in. It's just that we're bound to follow the advice of our town council and what she tells us is legal and what's not legal.
All right, then I need you to answer me a question. If I buy the piece of property, which is 70 square feet, and I get the 35-foot mark at the 30, at, I get the 100-foot mark at the 35-foot mark, that means I'm buying a wedge for my next door neighbor.
Would that make it conforming, yes?
That would make it a conforming lot.
Would that...
And then I would be able to do this, correct?
We cannot, we can't guarantee anything. We'd have to look at the petition as it was presented to us. But, I mean, if the circumstances were such that it was two conforming lots, I don't even think it would be presented.
If they're conforming lots, you don't have to get...
We put the zoning department and they'd issue a building permit.
Right, yeah.
Okay. All right, that's what we wanted to know, just to be sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I just add one other question? If at some point we had questions on any of this during the week, or is there somebody you could talk to about it? Like, buying the wedge, or I don't know.
The expert?
Marshall, maybe?
Oh, Marshall, probably, yeah. He's not here to...
Who?
To building it.
Oh, I know. I know who he is, yes. I know of him, yes.
Because he's the one who's going to issue the building permit.
Right. If you tell them the situation.
So it's two conforming lots, we don't have to come back here, we go to the...
You just go to the building department?
Okay. All right.
Because you're not asking for any variance.
Right. Okay, then we'll speak with them. Yeah, well, we didn't know, and of course, all this is kind of...
No, and yeah, I mean, this all dragged out, unfortunately.
That's for sure.
So, just to, we sort of need to formally conclude how we're going to do this. So, I mean, you can have us vote on the petition, and certainly, I mean, you know...
You're already led to what we're...
The other members are, you know, I only have one position with respect to sort of, you know, the guidance we were given. Or you could withdraw your petition without prejudice, and then if for some reason you needed to present, represent some form of request for a variance, you'd be free to do so. If you don't withdraw and re-vote on it and it's denied, then there's a certain period of time in which you can't re-present absent, you know, some changes, material changes to your circumstances.
All right, but if we have a conforming lot, then we wouldn't need to re-present anyway, right?
Exactly.
Okay, all right.
So, would you like to withdraw without prejudice, or would you like us to...
You want to withdraw, then? Do you think that's the best, I don't know, so...
It's up to you.
Yeah.
We'll withdraw, then.
At this point, we withdraw.
Yeah, so if something happens, you need to come back.
Right.
You'll kill yourself in that.
Okay, so we have a motion from the...
Who are the voting numbers? Because I think it's changed, or just the regular...
Yeah, the three of us. Just so everybody knows, I was not here last meeting, but I did watch the meetings on video, so I watched your hearing, so I love the video.
All right, good. Thank you.
Thank you for doing that.
Have a motion to withdraw the petition of 189 Rockland Street?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Aye. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Almost five minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It being after 7:05, next order on the agenda, please?
Town of Abington's Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, March 12th, 2020, at 7:15 PM at the Abington Town Offices, 500 Glenwood Way, Abington, on a petition of Daniel Zamani, 20 Berry Road, Abington, for a variance under 175-21 for side setback relief of 11 feet on that 20 Berry Road. The property is located on Assessor's Map 45, Lot 104, in the R30 zone. Richard McGraw, lead chairman.
You... Berry Road?
I'm not Berry Road. I'll see if I can...
Okay.
What's the name of the other company?
Um, Zamani?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is Zamani here or is it Berry Road? Or what?
No.
Is it past the time?
All right.
What time did they have down on the thing?
7:05.
Okay. The table?
Yeah. So, next up would be the continued hearing of the petition of Hancock, Abington LLC, 940 Hancock Street.
What time is it? 7:10, so we're good?
Yeah.
7:10.
The Town of Abington's Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, March 12th, 2020, at 7:25 PM at the Abington Town Offices, 500 Glenwood Way, Abington, on a petition of Hancock, Abington LLC, 103 Clayton Street, Dorchester, for a variance under 175-39B to allow 98 feet of pre-existing frontage at driveway entrance to 28, 28-acre parcel at 940 Hancock Street in MUPDD District. The property is located on Assessor's Map 57, Lot 1, in the MUPDD. Richard McGraw, lead chairman.
All right, good evening. Good evening, gentlemen, and Nancy, and members of the audience. For the record, my name's attorney Sean Riley. 500 Washington Street, and with me tonight is Mr. Michael Sheehan to my left in the blue mask. Michael is, well, Michael will introduce himself in just a few minutes. Just so we're all comfortable with the policies, obviously, mask on at all times, we're not taking it off to speak. I'm comfortable leaving it on. And it's okay if I stay here with this microphone?
Yes, it's fine.
Okay. This is a continued hearing regarding the property at 940 Hancock Street, which in the days gone by was known as Jackson Farm. The sole purpose we have tonight is for frontage variance. We have already been to two planning board hearings, and on this past Monday night, I'm pleased to report that the Abington Planning Board voted to approve the site plan for this project. And this, we are now proceeding, obviously, with the zoning board, and based on the designs being approved by the town engineer, those same site plans will now also be submitted to the Conservation Commission. And the Conservation Commission will schedule their public hearing to review desires. If I may, I know we filed a lot of paperwork with our application, but I just want to make sure we have almost everything. Do you have all the application materials? So we got a copy of the 1841 Plan of Jackson Farm. Kind of small type, but it just kind of shows you all this existing since the 1800s. It's Jackson Farm off of Hancock Street with entrances at our present proposed entrance and what's known as Jackson Lane, which is about a 33-foot wide entrance exit, a little more westerly on Hancock Street. So that was one of the plans we submitted. We also submitted the assessor's plan, which showed just, you know, another layout, another view of the 28 acres. And the 28 acres is all contained within Abington. They actually own some other land across the town line, but it is not being developed, it's not part of this proposal. Additionally, we provided you with Sheets 2 and 3 of the site plan, just to give you some more information. The site plan was prepared by the engineers of Kelly Engineering Group in Rain Tree, a very well-respected firm. The, it was the layout plan on Sheet 2 and the existing condition plans on Sheet 3 that are in your package already. And if you don't have it by chance, I need to refer to it, I do have extra copies. I just want to briefly go through a little bit of the history of this property because it's important. The present applicant has owned this property since 2013. They're not a recent purchaser, they bought it, as I said, in 2013. But this goes back to, for the record, I'm going to give you, this is the deed in 1954 to a company called the Colorado Corporation. Trying to get around the Plexiglas. There you go. All right, there. It's a hall of mirrors. It's a long deed, I'm not expecting you to read through it all, but it basically gives the dimensions of the Jackson Farm. And then in 1955, Colorado Corporation deeded a small portion to Walter and Rose Fitz, which some of you probably might know the Fitz's, which is that house of Terry May, if I'm not mistaken. The deed is, this is the deed in 1955. The result of that deed left approximately 98-plus feet of frontage in the area that we're talking about this evening, and it still had the 33 feet of frontage down the street. And finally, just for the record, this is a copy of the current deed into Hancock, Abington LLC. Oops, sorry, just for the record, which basically says the same description as the 1954 deed, but then at the end it says, except the part that we deeded out to the Fitz's in 1955. So since 1955, this property has been the same. The same dimensions, the same size, as I mentioned, 28 acres in Abington. The assessors' record says it's 106 feet of frontage at our entrance point. Our survey says it's 98.6 feet. You apply for the variance because this is now under the Muppet District. And finally, just to give us a basis, a point of basis, this is the 1954 zoning map for the town of Abington, it was two pages. The first one being the entire map, the second one being a large section of the area in which our locus is. But you'll see that it was in the RA1 District. That whole area, both sides of Hancock Street was in the RA1 District. And at the time, you were required to have 110 feet of frontage. And here's a copy of the 1954 zoning bylaws. And in the zoning bylaws, back in the day, back then, there was no such thing as contiguous frontage. You had the total frontage of 110 feet. So by keeping the 98 feet and the 33 feet, they had 131 feet of frontage. So it always complied. This property had 20 acres and over 130 feet of frontage. But of course, over the years since 1955, zoning has changed, definitions have changed, and currently, in the Muppet District, the whole western side of Hancock Street between the Tavon Line and Desmond Street is in the Muppet District. All of the houses on the western side of Hancock Street in this property is in the Muppet District. The Muppet District is multiple planned use development district, requires 10 acres, minimum lot size, and 200 feet of frontage. We have 28 acres, we have 98.6 feet of frontage plus 33, but we can't count the 33 under the current zoning laws. But I wanted to demonstrate to you that this was not a self-created hardship. This is a scenario that has been in existence since 1955, basically 65 years it's been in this position. I also wanted to mention to you that in 2012, the Abington Zoning Board did grant the frontage variance for a different proposal. And I know this board's not bound to what another board did in the past, but it is important to recognize that another zoning board for the town of Abington did go through this similar exercise with the same 98 feet of frontage, and the frontage variance was granted. And that was part of a project that allowed Relief to build a 54-unit apartment complex on the 28-acre parcel. They were going to loop around, come in where we're proposing, and then come also out Jackson Lane. And with 54 units and 90 bedrooms, would have been a much different effect of what we're proposing, what Hancock Abington's proposing, which is just the commercial, under zoning, it's called commercial warehouse. Six buildings, six small buildings, relatively speaking, that would service mainly Feeny Brothers Construction, which my client is here to represent. And he can tell you more about the details if necessary. Again, we're here for frontage. We're not here for the use of the property, that is a planning board decision. We're not here for traffic, that's a planning board decision. And we're not here for site lighting, that's also a planning board decision. I do have copies. The planning board hasn't issued its written decision, but I think you can certainly check and confirm that it was approved on the 3rd of August, on Monday night. I'm just looking for a copy of what I believe was the PMP letter. Let's see if I got that for you. Well, I'll move on if I don't have it in my hands. As you know, it's a free-pronged test for a variance. And for the record, I thought I jotted down some notes, so it's in the, in the record for the zoning. First one, obviously, being that test could be something unique. About the soil conditions, the shape of the park and the land, not affecting generally the zoning district in which it's located. Obviously, this is an irregularly shaped piece of land, but plans before you show that. The 98 feet of frontage ballooning out into a huge 28-acre parcel, significantly larger parcel than all the abutting lots along Hancock Street. Unlike any of the nearby parcels, we also have two separate and distinct pieces of frontage, and they're not contiguous, but it's the only access points to get to the 28 acres, the only way for the owner of this property to access and to develop its property in a reasonable manner. Unlike some of the other adjacent properties, this locus also contains a large wetland area, which affects soil conditions, requires a wetland processing and accordance with DEP standards, and that has all been approved and reviewed by the town's engineer. It will also be reviewed by the Conservation Commission, and we expect that it will also be approved at that level. If they require any revisions, we'll certainly make those more conform with anything they require. There's also significant amounts of ledge and bedrock, which obviously relates to soil conditions. But it's the shape of this property which is obviously the most indicative of the need for a variance. The second part of the test is the, will little enforcement involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, in the petition? Of course it would. A denial of a variance to the frontage, which has existed in this position for 65 years, would effectively leave this 28-acre parcel unable to be commercially developed with private driveways, would cause an obvious issue to begin financial hardship for the property owner. Not this property owner, but anyone who owns this property. Anybody who wants to develop this property in any way, even if you want to put a single-family house, if you were allowed to do so, you'd need a frontage variance. Anything that wants to go on this property would need a frontage variance. Abington is seeking more private commercial development, and this proposed project conforms to the goals of the Muppet District in that it is a low-intensity use of buildings that have set back more than 350 feet. The closest building is 350 feet from Hancock Street, which is more than a football field away from Hancock Street. The rest of it goes out into the backland. And as I mentioned, the Zoning Board of Abington previously granted such a frontage variance for the exact same property, the exact same dimensions, the exact same frontage in 2012, which would have allowed a 54-inch house project.
Was the, was the zone, the Muppet Zone back then, Sean?
It was. The Muppet Zone was enacted in 2003.
Next.
Lastly, can this article be granted without substantial detriment to the public's good and without nullifying or substantially derogating the intent or the purpose of the bylaw? The proposal does not nullify or substantially derogate from the bylaw or cause substantial detriment because, and I've listed a few answers to that, the proposed use conforms with the intent and with the uses of the Muppet District. The town's consulting engineer has reviewed and approved the drainage system to make sure that water flows away from Hancock Street as it currently does, and we will collect everything, clean it, and let it continue to go into the wetlands as it currently does. The town's consulting engineer has reviewed and supports the UMS traffic report. The fire chief's recommendations were incorporated into the final site plans. And that's important because one of the elements and reasons for frontage regulations, frontage regulations in Massachusetts zoning is a dimensional regulation. It is not a use regulation. It is a dimensional regulation. So what's the purpose of frontage? There's basically two main purposes for the case law. One is to make sure that there's adequate width of land to provide for fire or police or emergency access, that you don't have buildings too close to get up, that a vehicle couldn't get between them to get out back. And also, just again, in a more general sense, to create distance between buildings for aesthetics but also fire safety. In this case, as I mentioned, we are 350 feet away from the street. We are well behind the houses on Hancock Street. In fact, the houses on Hancock Street, south of our driveway, west of our driveway, have a, there's an area of wetlands behind them that will remain untouched. So that will be an actual buffer, which is shown on the plans. And obviously, by building this private roadway and in doing it in conjunction with some of the recommendations of the fire chief, it obviously provides safe and sufficient access for police, fire, emergency. The fire chief had asked, basically, two things. One was, they asked if we would add another hydrant at the far end of our property, because he looked at this as an opportunity to help put out forest fires that sometimes flare up out back in the open woodland. So he wanted to use this property as a staging area, and we agreed to extend our hydrant system out to the very end. So we have a fire bomb, if a forest fire came out, now it doesn't have to go through the brush from Hancock Street to get all the way out there. They would come onto our property and use a hydrant which is located some over 1,000 feet off of the street. That's at our expense, obviously. The other thing he had asked and suggested was that our entrance, there's not an island between inbound and outbound driveway lanes, it's just a, a rump, rumble strip, you know, raised concrete, you see, and hanging in some of the shopping centers. So that if a truck wanted to take a turn or back up or get around or whatever, they could go over that. It's not an impediment. The roadway and the driveway itself is wide enough. We had the engineers review the fire truck length and the swing and demonstrated that to the planning board. So it's plenty wide enough throughout the entire property, but they asked us to add that additional feature. So that was done. The planning board has approved the property's proposed use and the final site plan. The proposal will eliminate that 33-foot-wide Jackson Lane as a second driveway access point, which, as I mentioned, was part of the 2012 project. We are not developing or touching that area, which is between the houses, it's only 33 feet wide. And of the 10, I wanted to note, of the 10 closest abutting properties that are along the west side of Hancock Street, eight of those properties now have pre-existing non-conforming frontage, much like we do. Eight out of 10 of the properties next to ours don't have 200 feet of frontage. So they are pre-existing non-conforming frontage, just like we are. Approval of the variance would result in a requirement, but the property owner would now build the driveway as designed and approved by the town engineer and the town planning board. We would be responsible, obviously, it's our property, we'd have to maintain it. The owner would have to plow it, the owner would have to repair and repay it. Denial of a variance would only leave them with one other option, to build a public roadway in the exact same location, but that roadway would now be built, would be maintained, and would be plowed, and would be repaid by the town of Abington because it would be a public road. And if we're all looking to try to limit growth and expenses of the town by basically utilizing 28 acres for low-impact commercial development that is private... utilizing twenty-eight acres for low-impact commercial development that is privately owned and privately maintained, at no expense to the town, would seem like a logical thing to do. So certainly, it does not, this is not a substantial detriment or a substantial derogation for the intent of our Abington zoning bylaw. If anything, the grant of the variance, given the history and the age of the frontage, given the layout of all of Hancock Street, the size and the shape of our property, this warrants and deserves a frontage variance so that it can be developed in a reasonable manner. I'll pause there. Perhaps you might have some questions. Mr. Feeney is here also if we need to talk about it, but I appreciate the time and sorry if it took some time, and I know we might've forgotten some things that we talked about at the first meeting, but I think that's a, hopefully a rather thorough summary that can get us started. Thank you.
And so, just for clarification, the use of the property is gonna be a staging area essentially for National Grid?
No.
Accurate, no?
There's gonna be six buildings proposed, and I think you have the layout plan that shows them. Two of them, maybe three of them, would be used by Feeney Brothers. Feeney Brothers is a contractor or subcontractor that's hired by companies like National Grid. So what they typically do, and you'll see this right now if you drive down Route eighteen, on Monday morning, if Feeney Brothers has been hired to replace or repair a pipe in Holbrook or in Waymouth or Abington, their employees will arrive at the site, two guys get in the box truck, and they drive to the work site. And then, from that day on, that's a four, or five, or six day job, the box truck, the equipment is stored at the site. And so on Tuesday morning, the employees don't drive to Hancock Street, they go to the job site. They park right there. You'll see like, you know, for example, across from Sorrell is that yard there. So it's not an in-and-out every day, certainly not in-and-out every morning, or every hour, I should say. At best, they're trying to get to the job site if you start at seven o'clock in the morning. So either they're going right to the job site at seven, or they're getting the truck. Now, this is a saddling office, maybe what you heard, in that Feeney Brothers has different properties throughout the South Shore Eastern Mass. Taunton, Abington, Worcester.
Lawrence.
Lawrence. So that, if there is something down in the Taunton area, they'll use the crew from Taunton. If there's something in Holbrook, Waymouth, Whitman, they'll use the crew reps from Abington. If it's an emergency in the middle of the night, they use the main crews which come out of, Doitt justice, or like, oh, yeah, Doitt justice.
Were you required to submit any form of traffic study or anything like that to the planning board?
Yes, we did. We had our traffic engineer make a presentation on both nights, answered all the questions, and the town's engineer and the own engineer reviewed that report. They made a note that, obviously, it's much less traffic than the residential housing would've created. The concern initially was, there's gonna be large trucks coming in and out of here a lot. This isn't a large truck generator. As I said, and again, but I'm straight, they drive box trucks. The only, the only large truck that may be on that site would be in the far end of the site, where you see the lay-down area. They would have like a pile of gravel, maybe some PVC pipe and storage, and so if they needed gravel to come to a site, they have a front mower out there and they have a dump truck that would take that away. And in all our discussions, we said, well, how often do you have to replenish your PVC pipes? That might have to come in a long truck, doesn't it? They said, it usually gets replenished about every two to three months. So you have one truck, longer truck, coming in for that purpose.
You're obviously gonna have trucks going in and out during the pendency of the construction, though, correct?
Oh, sure. No matter what you build up there, your trucks are in and out.
Was there any time constraints put on when those could come in and out, given how heavy the traffic is in that location?
We talked about time, and really, it's a noise issue, and the town does have bylaws that are restricted, starting from, I think it's seven in the morning to...
Seven in the morning till five in the night. It's seven o'clock in the morning till eight o'clock at night.
Right. So that is restricted. But typically, when the business is running, and the traffic engineer made this point, their box trucks, and it may be, the maximum number of box trucks that would be coming out of that site, if they all left on the same day, at the same time, the same lot would be six. Right?
Yes.
That usually doesn't happen, because they're already off-site. But that would be your maximum. So the traffic engineer had made a point that his report was highly conservative. It wasn't the actual use here, because this is an even lower impact than what the traffic manuals recite, but we designed it and we presented it based on what the traffic manuals required. Lines of sight with the driveways, all of that. The other buildings that are being constructed, others being intended for, again, other contractors, the local plumber, the local carpenter, the local electrician, who needs a place to store his stock. There's no retail use in here that's gonna generate in and out traffic. And traffic, really again, was, it's a planning board issue, and was reviewed by the planning board and reviewed by the traffic engineer.
Well, I mean, we can't consider whether or not it's a substantial detriment to the public good, in my understanding that we have wide latitude of what we can consider, and traffic is one of those things that we can take into consideration.
I don't know that that's accurate when you're talking about frontage variance. I think it would be true if you were looking at site plan review, most certainly.
It's a variance, so it's...
It's a variance.
Okay, but that, the answer to your question is very important. It's not a use variance. You are not looking at the use of this property.
But we have wide latitude with respect to the condition that...
I disagree. You are looking at a dimensional variance. That is critical. You're looking at a dimensional variance based on the shape of the property, the history of the property. We're not here to discuss and to debate the use. The planning board has that prerogative naturally.
But still, it's a variance in the person bought the property with a variance there to use the property. Has to be a variance.
Anyone who owns that property needs a variance, so it doesn't, that doesn't disqualify them from applying for a variance. The land case tells you that.
Well, there's history there, though. You would need a variance. You would have, if you buy his property, you don't need a variance for a frontage.
That's correct. And to deny the variance is to say that this twenty-eight acre parcel is ungivable.
Well, you're taking court.
Now, you said it wasn't that.
Yeah.
They'd have to build a public road or a private road.
That is, the only alternative option is to build a public, a six-hundred-foot road, right, that doesn't go into the twenty-eight acres. Is that legit?
Well, all I can say is, who lives in this town?
I, I know...
He's driving down that street all the time, it's like we don't drive down that street, so...
I've listened to, I completely understand, and I understand that one of the number of concerns of the neighbors would be the traffic, because we're all familiar with that area.
Well, I'm not just saying the neighbors, I'm saying, Lee Person's driving down that road, have a truck pull up front of him, something like that, so...
I understand.
And are you taking property from someone else? Where is across the street from the driveway? I see the X is the...
That is, that's painted on the street.
What is that?
Supposed by the traffic consultant and approved by the planning board.
Isn't that someone's driveway?
No, it's in the street.
Okay, well, it's not, it's not in someone's driveway, in front of someone's driveway.
What? I don't, I don't understand, what are you talking about? I live on Hancock Street, and I'm right there in Hancock Street, so you're talking about taking a block, aren't you?
I just, I don't know, I just...
If, if I may?
Yeah, where is the block, the mark?
Cross from the driveway opening. Yep. On the lane that's going towards Route one thirty-nine. Yep. They have proposed painted striping, a hatching, a do not block area, you see an intersection. Okay, that's all of this.
He's got a Mary's traffic light.
This is, isn't that way from the driveway?
Wasn't there an extension though, off the road so you could turn the vehicle?
No, I'm sorry, we didn't have that, we, I told you. Yeah, we talked to you, hey, Paul, yeah, I told you. We didn't want to put food for you, I told you. I was just asking about that, but, so...
That's all that is. That was part of the updates regarding the traffic. Safety matters, whatever.
So, you know, when you say do not block, this is the middle of the street, correct? So if someone's in traffic there and they stop right there, we're not supposed to stop there? Is that what you're trying to say?
Right, you see that? You don't see a lot in Abington now, but this is...
Don't block the water box, yeah.
Yeah, don't block the box, exactly. That's all of this. It is a request of drivers, they don't anticipate it, they ignore it, but it's a request. So, two, because people are concerned that, oh, a truck might block me, well, if you don't block the box, and it's not, the majority, and again, this was said at the planning board here, the majority of traffic in and out of this property is not trucks. It's passenger vehicles, it's employees, it is not trucks. I understand that you're a bit concerned, you know, because that's the worst-case scenario, but I want to make it clear that the numbers and the size is much less than what you may be thinking. And the traffic report is on file with the planning board for anyone to read.
All right, we'll open it up to the floor if anyone wants to come up and state your name and address.
Lisa Mayes, ten twenty Hancock, right on, right on the corner, and I'm very disappointed that the notice that we got for the rescheduled meeting did not have a date on it. I would've been here Monday. There was no date on that announcement. And I realize it was the second announcement and it wasn't required, but I thought common courtesy would've been nice. I do have some serious concerns about this job. And we're talking about when the job is finished. When I'm talking about building this job and all the trucks that are gonna be coming in and out. You can't imagine, maybe some of you, if you come down Hancock Street and you let me get out, you can't imagine how long it takes me to get out of my driveway. And by running in all that traffic, it's just gonna be miserable. I understand, I am on a main road, I accepted that when I bought the house, but just some common courtesy. The idea of what the building that they're gonna have to do and bring in fill, they're gonna be polluting the Beaver Brook. There's no such thing as clean fill. So we're talking about major pollution that I didn't get a chance to address again this past Monday. Really bothering. We're here for these variances. I think it's a real problem to give this variance, only because we're saying what this is gonna be now, and we know it always changes. We know there's a quiet time between seven, is it seven and five PM? Does that mean it's a bar?
Seven to seven to eight, the noise violations.
To eight PM?
Eight PM, then there's a noise violation. If it goes to public, certain open.
Okay, and I appreciate different companies will have different needs. If these people are leaving on site at seven, that means they're gonna be behind my house to full seven. So I just, I'm really concerned, I didn't get another chance, and now this is not, you have heard who. I needed, I needed this to be brought up because I didn't find it very honorable. And I'll get on my hands to the variance, of course. Thank you for that, Mr. G.
Hi, guys. Paul Ferris, ten twenty Hancock Street. My main concern is, I don't understand all the frontage and all that good stuff. I live on Hancock Street, the airway that they're looking at is less than twenty-five feet away from my driveway, okay? So what is the frontage? The frontage is from Hancock Street to what, their building?
No, the frontage is actually on the street.
It's on the street?
There are things that were...
Right, the turn.
Right.
Right, I turned, I knew, I knew.
The intersection, the intersection right there, between the lobster bar?
Lobster bar.
Bar, in, in...
In my, in the house.
Yeah.
In my property.
The shrimmage.
That's called frontage. How much is that?
Ninety-eight point six.
Ninety-eight point six feet from the lobster bar to my driveway?
No, even before that.
Even before that?
Yeah.
Okay. So they're not looking to touch my property, my driveway, that corner, that line of sight, nothing?
Right, the only thing, yeah, one of the safety provisions, and again, I don't wanna go through fire straight, but when people are coming into Abington from Holbrook...
Yep.
And they tend to take, that's kind of a, how do you say, a slow curve? But they, people slow down, but not enough.
They don't slow down, but go ahead.
So what we're gonna do...
Yep.
Is basically put a rumble strip in the breakdown lane, where people usually cut into, which is going to make them slow down.
Okay.
Okay? We're not taking any of your land, we're not moving the curb there or any land.
You're not touching my hundred-foot pine tree that's in my yard and my bushes and everything and a long...
That's your property, we can't touch that.
Okay. And the building, the building, this is all back, right? And you have, with the way, it's what, three hundred feet, so, from Hancock Street to property?
The first building is three hundred and fifty, and it continues out back?
The first building is three hundred and fifty.
You don't show me that?
Yeah, of course.
You have, you're a little bit weird, I mean, I can...
So that first building, how far is that away from the back of my property?
It is, you can take the papers. It's three hundred and fifty feet...
Sorry.
Right?
Yep.
Three hundred and fifty feet from the street, and then just eyeballing it, it's probably a hundred and fifty feet from your back lot line, not from your, not from your...
See the stone wall there? That's my property.
That would give you an idea. It's actually on our property, the stone wall, but you know where it is.
I know where it is. All right, so this is their first building here?
Right.
Okay, so it's my property and then they're all the way back. How much property is, what's the distance between that, do you know?
Again, this is three hundred and fifty, it's about half, right? So it's a hundred fifty, a hundred seventy-five.
Hundred fifty, a hundred seventy-five feet. All right, and you're taking that corner and making it a sharp lane, sharp right, right? Yeah, whatever it is. No traffic light, right?
Right, we don't, we don't own the street, correct? Correct, no traffic light.
No traffic light. Okay, I'm concerned still, as my wife was about traffic, getting in and out of there. You guys know as well as I do, that is, it's a miserable street. It's a miserable street, okay? I understand his predicament, all right, it's not a real good location, okay? I wouldn't have bought it myself, but that's, that's your point? Okay, all right. I am against the variance.
And that rumble strip won't make a difference, if I can just speak for a minute. People don't go over to the side, because when I'm coming home, I have to stop and tap my legs just once I come over the line, so the people know, and they still don't. They stay on that road and they argue, but...
You're probably gonna have to listen to them.
The, I'm sorry?
You're probably gonna have to listen to them.
Oh, that too, I didn't even do that.
You're probably gonna have to listen to them.
But the rumble strip doesn't make a difference.
If you kind of goes over there, you're gonna have to hear it, probably.
Now, the road is tied up, every time a truck goes over the end of the street, I go boom, ten, twelve, fifteen, kind of...
There's a hole there, yeah.
Yeah, boom, every day.
I didn't hear the noise in the rumble strip, that's right, too. It's gonna be worse. Anybody else?
I didn't hear any.
The closing is in the floor.
Yeah? I'm on the floor, I think, so I just, I just wanted to, I've known Terry Mayes for a long time, so I, I...
And I might not disrespect you.
You, I don't take this as a scare, that's right. I just wanna respectfully answer some of your concerns, too. I know they're legit. If you have concerns about the fill issues, I would invite you to come to the conservation board.
Will you get a notice at the right date?
Yes, I don't, listen, you know where I'm responsible for.
I know, see my frustration? I showed up. I showed up for nineteen years.
I know. But we will be doing a discussion about that single issue, not that single issue, but that issue will be part of the conservation board. There's no date scheduled for that yet, okay? And as, and your concern about a change of use, you can't just change the use, if it's not inconforming with that zoning district, it has to come to the zoning board or the planning board for anything that's wild. And also, you have to file forms, I'm sorry, with the building department who change the use. Now, as I mentioned, the planning board here, that doesn't mean if I have an electrician in a building as a tenant, and then he leaves and a plumber comes in, that's not a change of use. That's still the same guy with widgets in a box, with every story, you know? But if that, if that electrical storage building became a 7-Eleven, that's a change of use, and that has to go through one of the local boards to see if that could be allowed. I would say once again that this is a dimensional variance. It's not a use variance. I do understand the concern of traffic, but I will say that a property owner has a right to reasonably develop their property. And I use it as comparison and as an example, that 54 apartments were already approved and were able to be, to fit in there and would have generated substantially more traffic than what this proposal is. If you're going to use 28 acres and be concerned about the volume of traffic, this is the project that you honestly would like to have out there, because it will have far fewer traffic impact. And again, you all have the right to go to the planning board here, and I apologize that you weren't there for the second one. I know, I think you were there for the first.
I understand, but we did it for the first, Ben.
Right. The traffic report concluded that, demonstrated that, it was a gentleman who had about 30 years' experience as a traffic engineer. So this is a low-impact traffic generator, not with the use of large trucks. They really don't interfere, their day is done by four o'clock, so they're not interfering with the rush hour at the end of the night, nor in the early morning, it's, again, a box truck or two or four. So we need to focus on the dimensional issues before you. Since 1965, this 98.6 feet part, uh, frontage has been in existence. The assessors record show it as 106 feet. Doesn't really matter. Where the survey says 98.6, we're going with the 98.6. It's a legitimate request, it's not a self-created hardship. I've demonstrated to you, the shape of the lot is obviously an issue that is one of the check boxes for the variance, and there's no substantive derogation or elevation to the zoning bylaws for the town of Abington if such a variance were granted. Case in point, it already has been granted prior, in a prior thing, and every lot on, not every lot, almost every lot on this street is now going to be nonconform on the western side. I want to point out to you that on the western side of the street, the frontage of the existing houses varies from a wide, the widest of 216 to 110, 86, 110, 110, 91. Across the street is, let's see, where are we, 196, 134, 75, 75, 130, 75, 50, 65, 65, 65. Those are the existing frontages of other buildings, of other properties on this street within a stone's throw. We have 98.6. It is not substantially different than what already exists in this neighborhood. I believe, do believe, this is a very reasonable use, and that we have met all of the factors and standards to allow the variance. As much as it might bother you that you think you're allowing the project, it's the variance for frontage only that is within the jurisdiction and appropriate of the board tonight. I appreciate your time and your patience listening to me. Could I, Mr. Sheen?
Yeah, thank you. Mike Sheen, Vice President of Red State, with Feeny Brothers. We have these yards, as Sean explained everywhere, and we work with the towns. I know they just say seven o'clock is your start time. If you come to us and say, hey, can you make that 7:30, 8:00 block? We do that. We're good neighbors everywhere we go. Mr., I really mentioned, President of Abington, we have 22 employees that live in the town of Abington. We didn't ask them to come here and smuggle the haul and waste your time, because obviously they're going to be in favor of us. And the use that we're asking for is not a lot. Right now, there's four crews working. Now, that crew might go down to zero crews for a period of time, and then they come back. We go where the work goes. But, you know, I noticed the note didn't have the date, and I called the town and spoke to the person, and she said, well, it's not necessary. So that was not us, just to be clear on that. But we'll work with you with whatever you want us to do. This is a good area for us to be in, we have a lot of work here, we're replacing a lot of leaky gas lines in this area, so that's going to benefit the town also. And as Sean said, you know, we get calls, we own a lot of properties, large properties like this, we get calls all the time from developers, we're not into that. You know, we buy these yards so we can use them to cut down on the travel time. Right now, our crews are coming out of nowhere, can imagine the traffic. We try to park on site, but the employee still has to get up early and drive there. So we understand all those things, and we're willing to work with any conditions with the town, we've got some hours of operation. Everything shuts down before a cluster for our Dorchester office. Everything's handled there. Nothing at night, no readings unless it's an emergency work, and that comes out of Dorchester. So Sean, I think you're explaining it, we would like to have a reasonable use of our property, and I think if you give us a chance, you'll find out what good neighbors we are. Our reputation in the industry is outstanding, and I wish that you would grant this to us.
Thank you, sir.
And I'd just like to say, I appreciate that you let us know that he wasn't going to bully us, so 22 of his employees to come down here and go against our wishes. I appreciate you telling us he weren't going to bully us.
Yeah, we did close it to the floor.
No?
No, no.
No more?
Sorry. All right, open it back up to the board. Anyone want to...
Sean, why do you think it's going to bother us to approve this? I don't understand. What does that mean?
I don't think it's appropriate for me to answer your questions, obviously, to close it, it's not fair to the...
All right, I'm asking you the question, why you think it's going to bother us to approve it?
I'm happy to talk to you, I just don't want to be unfair to the neighbors, that's all.
What are you talking about? I'm just asking a question.
Use the...
It's, it's, it's...
It's okay, just procedurally, if you close it to the floor, as I said, I'm on the floor.
Well, so you don't want to talk anymore?
I love the time, I'm just...
All right, that's a first, that's a first, okay.
I was just saying, I don't want to...
That's a first, great, okay, wonderful.
Mr. DeGraw, I respect your thoughts, I just...
I just wanted to know why you're saying it's going to bother us to approve this. You said that.
Yeah, I did, because you were mentioning, I drive by there all the time, I drive by...
We all drive by there, I said. We all drive by there, and you drive by there, too.
Exactly, and I respect the right of a property owner to reasonably develop the property. Whatever gets developed in that property is going to generate traffic. Whatever gets developed in that property is going to generate traffic. As I said, and as the traffic consultant reported, this proposal would be perhaps the most minimal traffic generator than any of the other proposals that could be contemplated for this 28 acre posse.
I thought you were talking.
I'm sorry?
I thought you were talking.
That's not my opinion.
All right, let's just, let's just get it out, let's just get it out. All right. All right.
Any other members of the family that you want to...
Well, obviously, this is a variance.
It is a variance.
Yeah, we're just trying to...
It doesn't matter, a variance is a variance. The standard, the same standard applies for all variances, and...
We just tried, we just had someone waiting for us. Uh, just keep that light.
It's supposedly 200 feet of my district, this is according to Sean's 90s, 98, 98?
96.
The town has it at 106, the assessors does.
96.
Vastly undersized as to what it should be. I'm not sure, I'm presuming when the planning board and the town, which adopts these bylaws, put this Muppet District in here, they were aware of these parcels that didn't have frontage. And I guess at some point, they figured that some developer might come in there and buy these places up on Hancock Street and develop it appropriately, so there's 200 feet of frontage. But I, to me, this is basically a big pork chop lot. You've got 100 feet, 90 feet of frontage, 100 feet of frontage goes in, and then it opens up in the back. And it's, it's not something that I think they've met their burden on, I don't see the hardship. If they do want to develop it, they can put a street in there, I know it won't be expensive, but a hardship personally to somebody because of an expense, that's not a hardship as far as a variance goes. And I do think it's detrimental to the, to the good of the town, of the people.
The neighborhood.
Yeah, not just the neighborhood, but that's the entire town, so I don't think that they've met their burden as far as a variance. My opinion.
And, I mean, along those lines, I certainly respect, you know, the petitioner and his willingness to work with the neighbors, and, I mean, it seems as though that you're, you know, from what your representations are, you're, you know, a good neighbor in the communities that you work in, and I do appreciate that, you know, your desire to use this location for a purpose that, to Sean's point, you know, could be the lesser several evils with respect to how it's developed. But we are, you know, looking at substantially less frontage than is required pursuant to the bylaws, you know, less than half of what is required pursuant to the bylaws. And I do have some concerns there, whether or not, as I mentioned, you've met your requirements for us to handle the variance. And can we just get on the record, Bobby, you recused yourself from this one.
If it was required, Bobby, I would have to recuse myself due to my association with the...
Oh, yes.
So I'm not going to take part in any...
The call, it's...
That's why I kept the motion up.
Okay, well, you asked, I was a...
Notice.
So, if anyone has a motion?
I'll make a motion that we deny the request for the variance. I would make a motion that we deny the request on the petition of Hancock Abington LLC 103 Clayton Street, Dorchester, for a variance under 175-39D to allowing 98 feet of pre-existing frontage as driveway entrance to the 28 acre posse at 940 Hancock Street.
And just to elaborate on that, that the house promised on the statements that you proved...
Yes.
Given that, I will second the motion.
Sir?
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Take your free time, go ahead.
What's your comment, sir?
What's your answer? Did you ever see Marshall's response? It is in one?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't see it, okay.
After seven o'clock, we're going to recall the petition of Chairman Daniel Zaboni. All right, this is the second request, and the petitioner is not present. He was notified, maybe? T N O?
I left a message on their phone. I didn't hear back from them.
You did not.
Could you possibly continue it?
I think we...
Yeah, well, I can...
Based upon what's going on and all that, I would make a motion that we continue to...
The next one would be September 10th, and I'll make sure I actually...
Yeah, hopefully, I'll finish, Sean.
All right, I have a second motion to continue the Zaboni petition. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, I think the only other thing we had outstanding was the, did we reformalize the...
No, it's not on the agenda.
Okay, very long for next time. All right.
There's still a lot, we can't show you.
I was thinking we would have any, redo it one more time. Okay. All right. All right, Seth, anyone wanting to make a motion?
Motion, turn, motion to the floor.
All right.
All right. All right. All right. Are you sure?